Okay, the first item of business is approval of our minutes from our October 25th meeting. We had packets out front and this information is also online on our website. Does anyone have any corrections or any additional information for our minutes before we sign these into the records? Hearing none, we'll move these into the minutes. Okay, the first item we have is like proclamation designating November as National Hospice Month. So we have a proclamation here that we're going to read. It's by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, "A proclamation, a hospice month, whereas the philosophy affirms the inherent dignity and worth of every individual in reverent human life in all its states, and whereas hospice offers a special way of caring for terminally ill patients and their families, enabling them to live comfortably and peacefully in their final days. And whereas hospice care relies on the combined knowledge, skills, and compassion of a full team of professionals and volunteers, including physicians, nursing assistants, social workers, and clergy, to help patients and their family cope with their bereavement. And whereas hospice supports and strengthens the entire community awareness of the benefits of hospice care. Now therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as Hospice Month in Walker County, and encourage all government agencies, community organizations, and citizens to participate in related activities and to support hospice and their vital services it offers our community during the month of November and throughout the year. Signed and sealed the eighth day of November in 2018." We do have a representative here tonight from hospice and get you to come forward and present this to you. Appreciate you Hunter coming and being with us tonight and we want to hear it please. Thank you for all that y'all do for our citizens with hospice.
Yes sir, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate you coming. Okay, item number two, Resolution R. 4418, Appointing Eddie Upshaw to the Lookout Mountain Community Services Board. We've had a recent opening in this board and I have a letter here for Eddie and also I have a resolution. Resolution R. 44-18, a resolution to appoint a member to the Lookout Mountain Community Services Board. Whereas the state of Georgia created the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board in accordance with the law, and whereas members are appointed for a term in accordance with the bylaws of the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board. And whereas the bylaws of the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board calls for members to serve three-year terms, and whereas Walker County Members Terms is vacant following the resignation of Nelda Parrish. And whereas, authority under Georgia law, it is granted and vested in the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia to appoint successor to the board. Therefore hereby resolve that the following named individual is hereby appointed under the term specified for the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board in Walker County, Georgia. Name Eddie Upshaw for a three-year term beginning November 15th, 2018, and expiring on November 14th, 2021. So very grateful for Eddie's community service and his dedication to take on this task and this responsibility on behalf of Walker County. All resolutions are contested by the clerk. We have a letter here that I'll be signing to go out to them and also be copied to Dr. Ford who is with Lookout Mountain Community Services. There Eddie comes in now, so we're recognizing him now.
Congratulations Eddie, thank you.
So this letter is dated November 8th, 2018, and this will save us a stamp to have to mail this to Eddie. We'll give this to him tonight. This is addressed to Eddie Upshaw. "It was a great deal of pleasure that I appoint you to serve on the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board for a term beginning November 15th, 2018, and expiring November 14th, 2021. Thank you for your willingness to serve the citizens of Walker County. Sincerely, Shannon K. Whitfield." Thank you Eddie.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, an acceptance of a federal Victims of Crime Act Assistance, VACA, sub-grant for the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for FY 2019. As y'all can see, these grants, they're never short for paperwork. This is a grant that the county has received several years in a row. We're not going to go through and read all the fine print and bore you with all of this, but if you cannot sleep later tonight or sometime this weekend, this information will be online on our website in its entirety. This is for a grant period of October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019. Allocation one, base funds. We have base federal funds of $170,756, matching funds of $42,689. There is an allocation two for federal funds of $53,787, matching funds required is $13,447. So Greg is our Chief Financial Officer. Is there any changes or anything that you want to point out or mention or anything unusual this year out of the ordinary?
This is just a continuing grab we've had. I've been here 17 years, we've had it every year I've been here. The dollar amount stays about the same, so the DA administrates it so.
Okay, thank you. So anytime we can get federal grant dollars to help us offset our property taxes, that's a good day. So we'll accept this grant and continue this and it's something that's very helpful to Walker County. There's a lot of pages here I've got to sign, so I have to do this in the public meeting, so y'all bear with me as we sign this about 20 times. Alright, we're getting close here. Thank you. Okay, we have item number four, Acceptance of a Transit Program Subrecipient Contract for FY 19. This is from G Doc, very much the same thing. A lot of places here we've got to sign, but just reading part of this here so everyone will understand the content. This is from George Department of Transportation enclosed for the execution of Walker County. It's a copy of the FY 19 to assist the operations of public transit system under the FTA 5311 Rural Assistance Program. The project contains 50% federal operating funds in the amount of $328,119, and local match of 50% in the amount of $328,119. The project also contains 80% federal capital funds in the amount of $111,695.81, 10% state funds in the amount of $13,961.97, and 10% local match in the amount of $13,961.98. This is a very, very important grant that is very beneficial to the citizens of Walker County that use our transit system. As you see, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars here in federal matching dollars that come to us that enable us to be able to do this without having to put all the burden onto property taxes. One of the big benefits of this program is the actual, that allows us the capital purchases of the vans. Those vans are about $47,000 apiece, completely decked out with all the accommodations, wheelchair lift, all the safety items that go on those vans. And the state buys those in large quantities and gets the government pricing and they're still $47,000. So these grants allow us to be able to buy those buses and only pay 10% or about $4,700 per bus to run those. And so this is an outstanding program and I think you'll see in our statistic report the thousands of number of rides that we do each and every year. And so it's a great pleasure to accept this grant. Just one or two more here. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Walker County Department Statistics for the Month. We produce this each and every month to give the citizens a snapshot of the productivity of the things going on in Walker County. We report on this each and every month. So the month of October, we had 100 dogs that were either adopted, returned to the rightful owner, or rescued. Five dogs actually had to be euthanized and there was no activity on any cats. Code enforcement, they were able to inspect and find 354 properties that were in full compliance with our codes for sparse property maintenance. There was 26 violations or citations that were written for the month and they were able to get five cases closed out for the month of October. So year-to-date, they were able to close out 315 cases. So that's 315 properties in Walker County that are now in compliance that were not last year. And there was 480 that was brought into compliance in 2017. So we're getting very close of hitting that 1,000 mark of having 1,000 properties in Walker County that have been brought in compliance due to property maintenance that were not in times past. The Fire Department continues to respond to a tremendous number of calls. There was 506 responses by our Fire Department in the month of October. 445 of those were with the quick response vehicles. So year-to-date, they've already responded over, responded to 5,345 calls compared to 2017 at 4,742 calls and 2016 at 3,492 calls. So from 2016 to 2018, the time we get to the end of the year, it's very likely that the call volume will have doubled from where it was two years ago. It's not that we're having more fires, it's just that our first responders using the quick response vehicles are responding to more medical related type incidents. People that are having breathing problems or anything from a life or death type situation, extreme injuries, car wrecks, these type things. And so they're serving us very well and answering a lot of calls and helping us protect our citizens. Litter picked up, it was 12,380 pounds of litter picked up by our litter patrol. Mountain Cove Farms continues to be a shining light in our county. They had 81 nights booked out in the month of October. They come off of even a stronger month in September at 83 nights booked. 2018, that gets the number up to 673 nights that had been booked at Mountain Cove Farm in our cabins or in the house combined compared to 2016 at 525 and 2016 at 162. So in 2016, there was only 162 bookings. 2018, we're already at 673. We will definitely go over the 700 mark, maybe even get closer to 800 nights stayed at the Mountain Cove Resort. Staff's done a tremendous job and we're actually working with a smaller crew. There's actually less staff people there than there was two years ago. So I'm really proud of what they've been able to accomplish. New single-family home construction, there was nine new permits pulled in the month of October, brings our number up to 114 for the year. Media, public relations, there was 50 media impressions or stories that was tracked in the month of October, positive things about Walker County. We added 130 new Facebook followers that grows every single month. Joe was able to get out 35 unique Facebook posts for the month. 27,832 visits to our website. Our website traffic is a tremendous amount of people that are looking at our website and looking at information from a tourist standpoint to information about local government on our website. We added 55 new subscribers to the newsletter and we had a great month in patching our potholes. 1,189 potholes were patched in the month of October. So we've dialed in the patching truck and they've done a tremendous job patching our potholes. I know that's a lot of potholes and I know we didn't get to all of them, but when you've got about 700 miles of road that we've got to maintain that has been for the most part neglected over a long period of time, we have a lot of potholes and we're working on our paving plan for 2019. But we want to get these potholes filled to try to keep that water out of these potholes and get those sealed off so it doesn't undermine the integrity of the base of those roads because it's much more expensive when you have to go start rebuilding the road and rebuilding the base back than it is to try to keep those sealed so we can get those paved. So we don't like being in the pothole patching business, we'd rather be in the paving business, but that will come in time as we work to refine our plan and also as the T-Splash dollars continue to come in, we will get more roads paved. We was talking about our transit system a while ago, there was 1,949 trips on the transit in the month of October. That was up from 1,738 in the month of September. So year-to-date, there's been 17,850 transit trips. So that just goes to show how important that grant is, how important our transit system is, and what an important part of county government the transit continues to be for us. Okay, one item that we have here just under informational. We did put out a bid proposal request for our Walker County Local Maintenance Asphalt Resurfacing Project 28-2 for Diamond Circle, which is on the, just north of the city of Lafayette, off of Highway 27. This is a project we've been working on for a couple of months where we've actually had to do some road rebuilding. There was a lot of settlement of the asphalt in and around the sewer lines where there was not proper compaction when the sewer lines were put in several years ago. Diamond Circle is literally like it says, it's a circle road of a subdivision. There's a lot of houses up there, it's about a mile all the way around the subdivision. And those roads were some of the worst in our county. They were so bad that it was different parts of the road, you couldn't even drive on that side of the road. If you were going down the side of the road that was the roughest, you would just have to wait if there was an oncoming car so you could move over into the other lane to drive down that road. It was that bad. So we had to do a lot of digging those soft spots out, there was areas that we had to dig down as much as three foot to get to some solid soil and rebuild that base. And there was some places in there that we ended up running into so many soft spots that they just took out the whole width of the road for several feet and just completely rebuilt the whole base of that section. So we had benefited from some of the rain we've had because that helps the compaction process and cars driving over it. So I've talked to several of the neighbors up there and they say, "Well, we don't like driving on a gravel road, but it's better than it was a few months ago." So just being able to get solid compaction and get the potholes and the extreme low spots gone is much better than what it was. So we've put out this proposal to accept bids and we're hoping that there's a chance if the weather will stay good for us, that we will have some opportunities and some days to hopefully get that paved before the end of the calendar year. So it's all going to be weather dependent, but we're going to do everything on our end from a bidding process and documentation. And actually, there's a copy in your packet that is the announcement that's also going into the messenger and that shows in here that time allowed for performance is up until December 31st. So we've been working hard on that and committed to try to get that done and so if everything goes well, we'll be able to get that accomplished. Worst-case scenario, if the weather don't hold up, it may get pushed into January or whenever the asphalt plants get back open, but we're hopeful that we can get that done. Okay, this time that ends our official business session of our agenda and at this time we will open up the floor for any general discussion about Walker County. Due to requests from citizens, we have enacted a five-minute time limit. So we ask that anything that you would like to come and address the county government about, that you keep it specific to local county issues. Don't get off on the national elections or the state elections or anything like that. Let's keep it here about county government. And Robert's our timer and he's going to let you know when your five minutes is up. If there's things that we still need to have continued conversation about, be happy to stay with you after the meeting and have conversation. Or any of the staff members that are here would likewise be willing to stay and have a conversation with you. But out of respect to everyone's time, anything that takes longer than five minutes in conversation, we want to have that offline in conversation instead of holding people here for people to go well in more depth than maybe is needed in a public forum. So I'm usually the last one to leave, usually lock the door and turn off the lights when I leave, so however much time we need to spend tonight talking about issues, I'm willing to do that as long as you're willing to be considerate of everyone else's time and limit your comments publicly to five minutes. So we do have our podium up here, you may have to turn it a little bit so everybody can see you, but we ask you just to state your name and the floor will be yours. Anyone have any public comment tonight? Alrighty, well, I appreciate everybody coming out. I know this is a tough night with the weather and the cold. Oh, okay, we've got ones changed their mind. Ms. Williams, go ahead please.
I'll just come up here.
Yes, if you would, maybe just turn the podium a little bit so they can get you on both cameras. And speak up so they can hear you as well.
This might be unpleasant. I, the very first class that I ever took in college, my first business class, they said, our professor said, "It's not how things are in business, it's how people perceive them." So I want to convey to you how the community has perceived a particular situation. And I hope that you will listen and not be on the defensive and hear me out because this is how the community has perceived what has transpired here. We've been working for months and months and months since February of this year concerning the Stay Neuter Program and how desperately we need it. We're forming a 501(c)(3) because there isn't one in Walker County. There is none in Walker County. We have to reach out for help from other counties, including North Georgia Animal Alliance, which they're fabulous, I love them, but they're actually from Coteauza County. We need it here. I worked weeks and weeks and weeks, many days in a row, sometimes just a couple times a week with my kids have paws, to try to get them here. We took all of our research and all of our information when Mr. Warlow was kind enough to say that he would entertain a meeting, we could only have a few people come. Chelsea Dill approached me and wanted to be involved and wanted to come. She hadn't been involved at all prior to that with any of the goings-on, but we've all been working fabulously together. There has not been one unkind word, one anything. This group of citizens are working so hard. This group of citizens are working so hard. So there were some concerns and I said, no, it's all good. I talked to her, it was all good, it was all good. So we came to the meeting, I brought up to you that my kids have paws and that we were looking for a building. Well, this group of citizens that are your constituents are citizens, not numbers in the community. And I feel like we don't get any attention because we're not a number that you can write down. Honestly, we get dismissed. We had months of research and a lot of information that was beneficial to the county and the shelter as well that we provided to you and asked you to help us if you could provide, if the county could provide a building for my kids have paws. They still continue, continue to contact me. And what you did was reach out to North Georgia Animal Alliance and have them doing it now through them with my kids have paws and never gave me the professional courtesy of a return call to tell me that's what you've chosen to do, even though you know professionally, we've been doing this for months. And I told you at the meeting that I was in contact with them. So my kids have paws thinks that we're a cesspool of confusion here because nobody knows what the other person is doing. And Commissioner, we had no problems prior to when I met with you. And when we had our meeting with Chelsea after the commissioner's meeting, all of the notes that she took were information that were going to benefit the shelter and the county. Okay, we want to help the shelter and the county and we still do, no matter what. But the, and she gave us some ideas and made some offers of where we could do the my kids have paws. She was offering up a place for us. The next day, she sent us all out a text that said, because of family issues, she had to withdraw from the group. Would not return a single call or a text to us and will not return the paperwork that our group was using to function for our group, a five oh one C three in our county that our citizens are trying to support and help our county with. And then, poof, she's the shelter manager. Without a word. From you on what we presented to you professionally dignified tons of research. And from her who took our information, made notes on all of the research that we had done that'll benefit the county, then drops out with a fib because she came to your meeting that night and she's been at the meeting every, and I've seen her everywhere. There is no big crisis going on, but there's no reason that she couldn't have returned that paperwork because we're trying to help the county. Just because we're not on payroll doesn't mean dismiss us, stand on us and our research and our efforts and do something else and keep it a secret. I think what has happened here is so far out of line and disrespectful to the people that are working. We are working to help this county. And I would appreciate an explanation that you can give me that will change my mind on how I perceive what has happened here because it's pretty awful.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate you coming tonight and I appreciate you working to, work with the county to try to help and save as many animals as we possibly can as a community. Because it's, it's a real problem, as you well know, of the number of animals that are running at large and the number of feral cats and different things that we're dealing with as a community. So we need all hands on deck, so to speak, and everyone getting involved. So it's not just one or two groups or three groups that it's going to take to solve the problems. It's going to take.
We know this, we're in the business, we know it.
Okay, let me, let me have my minute, okay? So we have, as you indicated, we've met with you, you and I even talked on the phone earlier this week. You called in on the show last night, here you are today. So you're, you're not being ignored. So I don't want you to leave here thinking that you've been ignored. You know, we.
You just stepped on us.
Now, listen.
You did.
You know, just like the meeting that we had Seth the other day that, that you were at and Robyn and Matt and Serlips were at.
That's the one I'm talking about.
You know, we, I think we've kind of had a timeline of about an hour and I think we went much past that timeline even.
Ten minutes.
So, you know, there was a lot of information there. And so we are still working through some hurdles of a mobile spay and neuter, which is what my kids have paws is proposing. There are some, some liability challenges and hurdles with that.
We know these things.
Okay.
My issue with it, Shannon, is that you reached out to the North Georgia Animal Alliance and are working with them now with my kids have paws.
No, that's, that's not.
They just called me during the meeting is why I went out and took the call.
That's not quite the perception, that's, that's a misperception.
Well, it's the same perception that my kids have paws has.
Okay.
So we have a problem that we need to fix here.
Here, here's, here's the, here's the truth, here's the reality of this. One of their members of North Georgia Animal Alliance made some posts on Facebook recently. So I private messaged the person that was making those posts, had a dialogue with them. And they were talking about other issues primarily dealing with feral cats. It's pretty much what North Georgia Animal Alliance deals with.
I know what they do.
They take and have a very good program of, of going to owners that have feral cats that they are feeding and they take and trap those cats and they take and have them spay and neuter and return them back to that rightful owner.
We do too.
Okay.
We do too, in our county.
Okay. Now, let me, let me tell my side here, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I asked them, hey, y'all are having a conversation here. I would like to speak and meet with your leadership of your organization. Please have them reach out to me with some times and dates that would accommodate their schedule.
I know you met with them.
So they came down and we had a meeting. And so they are part of a potential solution, very much like you and Savannah are part of a potential solution. It's more, it's bigger than you or I either want.
Shannon, you're talking to me like I'm not educated on this.
It's a big problem.
All of these people know, we know what the problem is. And all these groups, we all talk together because we work together.
So you're, you're coming to scold me because I'm having a conversation with them?
No, I'm coming because they have now told me, as have my kids have paws, that you are working through North Georgia Animal Alliance to work with the mobile unit. And I'm not scolding you, but I am telling you that I'm offended because you never followed up on that meeting with me. You knew that I have been talking with them because I brought you the information.
There's nothing, no, no way. I had already met and had a conversation with my kids as paws before you and I had ever met.
I arranged that with them, Shannon. I've been working with them for months. And I said, you've got to get with him, you've got, as soon as they got with you, they contacted me. And that's why I asked you about the paperwork that you still needed.
So we, we have been gathering information, documentation, looking at options and evaluating the whole situation.
What other options are there for the mobile unit to come in?
Well, there are many other options.
Okay. This, this was one item, the only thing that I reached out to the county for. Because all of these organizations, we all work together. They're wonderful and we work together and we communicate regularly. You said it's a bigger problem than I realized. We're in the problem every day. I have a foster at my home right now. We're all trying to help with this in our community. And that's a problem that you don't see. Because your community has hundreds of people who are taking in animals on their dime every single day. And we need something right away. And it isn't to adopt them, it isn't to foster them, it's an overpopulation problem. And that's what the, the mobile spay and neuter is trying to do. And there isn't another option right now for a mobile spay and neuter. And it isn't the county's baby. It, that's not your, that's not you. That's what these organizations do. The only thing that we asked of you was for a building. And if you're going to reach the government's hands out into nonprofit organizations of volunteers and in essence, get in the way, there I have a problem because we are trying to solve problems.
Well, and, and for everyone else's time, I think we've gone much past five minutes. So we can have some more conversation tonight after this.
Can you stay after?
Can you stay for a little while?
Yeah, but I really do want some explanations, Shannon, I really do.
Yeah, it's a work in progress and nothing's been decided or found.
But it's not your work in progress. You only had one decision to make, a building, yes or no? And if so, when? The rest of it is the nonprofits. It's not the county, y'all can't afford it.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything tonight? Okay, well, appreciate everybody coming and everybody be safe. And we will be back the Saturday, excuse me, the Thursday after Thanksgiving. We normally would meet on the twenty-second, but our meeting will be on the twenty-ninth. So look forward to seeing you on the twenty-ninth.